Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock. Today is Tuesday, August 16, 2022. I want to welcome everyone to the Al Sanus County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. So Commissioner Tony Haas, at this point, would you please give us an invitation?
Lord, thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for the blessing of our worship and worshiping Lord Jesus Christ in this heart. We pray that you will direct each and every one more step so that it can be in the name of your spirit and your grace. May all of your -- may all of our steps glorify you and make the never-doubt plan to now be a success. May it succeed on earth.
May it succeed on earth. May we have some, uh, pleasurable legends.
My pleasurable legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, honor God, even this world with liberty and justice for all.
Go call Mr. Dr. Haas.
Commissioner Luis Lopez, here. Commissioner Haas, here. Commissioner Felix Lopez.
I am here. A approval of the agenda, do you want me to change the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Commissioner.
Okay, I will entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
You approve the agenda. Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez, yes. Commissioner Haas, yes. Commissioner Felix Lopez.
Yes. Section two, consideration of minutes, consideration of regular meeting minutes from July 5th, 2022. Our commissioners, we have had these minutes. Whether any questions and discussion, or else I will entertain the motion.
Go for approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 5th. Second one. Commissioner Luis Lopez, yes. Commissioner Haas, yes. Commissioner Felix Lopez.
Yes. Go to, uh, section three, agreement of first time, this commissioners' legal reports. Commissioner Luis Lopez, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here and coming with us. I report to you great this morning. On August 3rd, I attended my, was having a Sparkle County Board of Health meeting. Uh, we're moving forward with, uh, securing a location for the Balsamburg Building in sight with the Sparkle County Commissioners, you know, work session with Sparkle County Commissioners for that new facility. There might be some changes coming to that with the community center, uh, possibly being involved, renovated and or raised and a new entire building. So that's in the conversation right now with the Board of Health and Sparkle County Commissioners. Um, took up the permission over this soon. So also on the, uh, as we all know, COVID response and, uh, and the numbers are down in Los Angeles and Sparkle County, uh, they are seeing, um, the treatment plans of the wastewater with that results happening up in the Tesla and databases at the sewage plant. So that is another good sign to see that that is reducing. However, the monkey pox is something that is becoming prevalent in the state of Colorado, uh, pretty much transferable through, uh, homosexuality, uh, but also it is being transferred from skin to skin, uh, those that have other family members in that household, uh, similar to chicken pox. Uh, so the vaccines are being rolled out for that. So it's not a pandemic at this point. It's not a, um, concern to be worried about like the COVID was in 2020, but we're just being a terrible eye out on the monkey pox and the vaccines rolling into the state on a regular basis. On the 11th, uh, we had our permanent renewal meeting here and our esteemed Chairman, Mr. Ed Grego, is with the city for one of the presentations to this minute. Uh, thank you for being here, Chief Chairman Grego. Um, there's, uh, we have some sort of, uh, bad news for urban renewal of our decline in revenues. It looks like it's going to happen. Mr. Grego met with our county assessor to discuss those issues and it looks like some of the tip, the tax increment funding mechanisms have decreased for renewal this time. So, um, that board will figure out how to move forward with the programs that we do and that funding availability, um, with the city of Trinidad and moving forward. Now, there still are, have time to be filled out, um, for receipt applications for our MSA program. So, uh, you know, for all the businesses that are interested, please contact Whitney at the city of Trinidad or Mr. Ed Grego at Grego Insurance and they can move forward with that, some of our MSA programs. And one of our newest, um, program that was just done and completed, if you all noticed, downtown, the, uh, S C R two theater at Bayside, now was funded through, partially through urban renewal. So we're very proud of that program and that, uh, coming to fruition and it looks beautiful. I think they did a really good job in getting that building built. So, um, way to go urban renewal board directors and appreciate your work ethic and efforts in getting those accomplished. Um, on the 22nd, yesterday, Otero Partners Incorporated met, there was another loan that was given out. Um, so we are having more loans come through, more applications that are continuing to come through through Otero Partners Incorporated. And we wanted to thank our, uh, our, our two members here in Los Angeles County for the finance committee, the new committee. So thank you, Commissioner Lopez, for all your efforts on that board. Um, we continue to give small business loans out to businesses in Otero County, Los Angeles County, and this program. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself or Mr. Dan Albert, Otero Partners Incorporated. On Friday, I will be meeting with Department of Passenger Rail, who will be finalizing our, um, bylaws for that organization. Uh, the subcommittees have finished finalizing that and I believe we are ready to put it on the table to finalize all of my laws for that. Future Department of Passenger Rail, uh, coming up. And then on the side note, uh, Commissioner Dr. Haas, today, August 31st, the city of Trinidad will be in power outage, um, and then the courthouse will be closed on that eight.
February 22nd.
September 30th, 10:30 AM. So that's our board, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tony Haas.
On the 11th of August, the Environmental and Tax Assistance Committee met to review the new federal end of the state sovereign status direct distribution guidelines and to review 13 route applications and awards were made on the western slope for approximately three and a half million dollars. Also, on the 11th, the county, state county, local, uh, met and, uh, there was a financial report. We saw one million seven hundred thirty thousand decrease in net working pay on paper loss. Should see a recovery in 2023. The territory bond state is staying higher. The board can see the struggle in the counties due to COVID and moved away for increases. Los Angeles County's rate band will remain the same at rate band one for 2023. Uh, Bureau of Land Management, Wildlife Corridor, Plan Management, uh, Plan Amendments and Presentations, uh, on the 12th of August. Madeline West, uh, the presentations were by Madeline West, Robert Glenn, Director John Holt, Senior Advisor for Energy and Wildlife, and Liz Reese, Colorado Field Representative for CPW. CPW has considered and certain priority decisions to sensitive habits in regards to passing law regulations and grazing leases, the further enhanced recreational opportunities. Plus CPW wants to develop a plan to benefit Big Game, go outdoor economy and create initiatives for private landlords to participate in the access to allow public access to private lands for recreational trails. So a lot of this BLM and federal land is surrounded by private property and, uh, what they're going to do is offer incentives to the, to the landlords to increase, uh, trail activity across their private lands, especially to connect the, uh, the, uh, BLM and federal lands. Uh, this is totally a voluntary project and, uh, probably the most concerning for me was that there would be limitations considered on grazing as big green recreation, uh, big game habitat and recreation to control agriculture production. Ladies and gentlemen, where do our records office week come from, right? Action 22 met on this, this weekend. Uh, it was a membership, uh, report. We drew by forty-seven new entities so far this year. Um, we discussed and pending legislation coming that will force electrification on, on all the new builds and renovations. This build would eliminate gas and propane and wood stokes for heat, as well as gas and propane and wood heaters and turkey stoves in our homes. So they're pushing for a new green energy, they're pushing really hard for that. Now there's, there's going to be legislation introduced that may, may happen. Uh, also, uh, Act of 22 is going to have to offer an academy. It's going to be called Academy 22. It's a six-credit power course to offer all this information, government, governance, civics, and federal and state, at federal and state and local levels. Action 22 has already received interest from UCCS, USC, and public media colleges. They want to make it part of the, uh, history of this is over to.
Thank you, sir. Good morning again, everyone. Welcome. A couple of things that we got going on this summer with Colorado counties, all you county commissioners were meeting by region. I had an opportunity as President of Colorado Counties to attend the meeting that the Front Range District Meeting, uh, held, uh, a couple of Fridays ago. One of the, uh, one of the great things that we're doing, every year we come together by region, we belong to the Southern Region, about sixteen counties, and, uh, this particular region that, uh, the, uh, Front Range, you're talking about Laramie County, Boulder, Ember, Romfield, uh, El Paso County, uh, portions of Douglas County. So the population concentration is in there and we have a great opportunity in front of us to create at least eight priority bills that are going to be sponsoring statewide. So we'll be putting this to a vote on September, uh, on October 7th and on the 8th, we'll take a final vote. Once we identify these, at least eight priority bills that the entire Colorado County membership will support, will send those to the legislature. We have had every year for the last three years, this great opportunity to come up with seven or eight legislative bills to protect our counties from a couple of things. One is no more unfunded mandates, which is really great. It has been an attack on counties on funding mandates for the last three years of our legislature. Second, we want to sit at the table, we want communication. Uh, here is a third, uh, one of the things that we keep an eye on, on when we're drafting this legislation is how do we implement these things? So right now, the meetings that we have going on is a lot of the legislative, legislative issues that passed on 2022, we're coming together and how do we begin to put that out? So it's incredibly what, what's happening at Colorado counties. So we'll keep you abreast and posted on what's going to be happening, but one of the big things, uh, the majority of counties own landfills and, uh, landfills are becoming such a, uh, oversight because Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment has so many rules and regulations with water seeping into, seeping into the water line, into the water basins. I mean, it's incredible. So the regulations that some of these counties have, are having to go through are exacerbating, financially exhausting, and, uh, I have a great opportunity to moderate, I'll be moderating both the 7th and the 8th of October as the, uh, the representative of Colorado counties. So to guide us all together to come up with a seven or eight, uh, uh, priority. And then we come up with a second list of priority bills, which if in the event, as we go through the, uh, the discussion and meetings, some of those bills from priority might fall off, we can go back and pick one up from priority two and send those through. We have had a great success from Colorado counties. Uh, the, uh, success is greater than ninety percent perhaps of priority bills. One of the, uh, one of the bills that we're keeping, uh, one of the legislative initiatives that we're keeping an eye on is America the Beautiful or a Thirty by Thirty. What the federal government through executive order is basically saying that by 2030, thirty percent of all the land in the United States should be owned by the federal government, which is all of you, it's all of us, taxpayer dollars. Well, we had a meeting on the Western Region, uh, a couple of months ago. Commissioner Tony Haas and I were present and, uh, we, uh, virtual, our three commissioners participated. One of the things that I asked the question to the representative from the White House, what percentage of land is already owned by the federal government? And without a doubt, he said about thirty-seven percent. So what does that really mean when they're saying thirty by thirty? Is that another thirty percent on top of? And so right now, the Western Region, which is one of the most important regions because of the water that we produce and the ag that we have, is we're going to keep an eye on what happens with this America the Beautiful legislation that has been initiated. And so we're hoping to find a little bit of a balance. And when I say a balance, I think, uh, the easiest thing that we can do is be partisan. But I think what partisanship is where we need to be. So I'm hoping that we have a little bit of a balance here in 2022 because we're tired of being going one way. So that's, uh, my second, uh, my second point is if you ever interested in, uh, seeing what happens, go to our county website and we have Colorado counties. Take a look and see where your region is at, take a look and see what other counties are doing. And I can tell you that the majority of counties do have, uh, this priority of standing against no more unfunded mandates. That is incredibly one of the things that is, that has been, uh, happening. And then of course, attack on agriculture, which is one of those things that is happening and pretty much in the open. So we don't know what's going to happen in 2022 electoral day, but we're hoping a little bit of a balance can actually bring conversation and dialogue. My second point of update is, uh, I want to thank you, uh, Finance Director Oberly. We had our second mid-year budget discussions. And, uh, so thank you for that and your county commissioners, your county finance and your county team are keeping track. And right now I deliver on track as a county where we need to be on, uh, revenues and expenditures. So looking out for your, uh, for the well-being of the fiscal, uh, stability of your county. So that would be my report. Commissioners, thank you. And now let's go to, uh, let me see here, we're going to go to, uh, electoral officials' update. We have a couple of, uh, messages, no updates from our broker reporter and no updates from our sheriff's office. Do we have anyone from the, uh, county assessor, Mr. Amaro? Anyone from, uh, Los Angeles County Treasurer, Mr. Tana Diouf? Anyone from District Attorney's Office, Mr. Solano? Anyone from our corner, Mr. Juning Burger? Anyone from our county surveyor, Mr. Gary Terry? Do we have anyone sign up for public, public, Mr. Dr. Haas?
No, sir.
Thank you. We will not go at this point in time presentations. Uh, we have first of all, uh, want to welcome, uh, Mr. Troy Berber, uh, from, uh, Northland Public Finance.
Yes.
Please join us, sir.
You want to add body of interest?
Yes, sir.
Is this okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for having me this morning, commissioners, staff. Uh, my name is Troy Berber. I'm Managing Director for Northland Public Finance. And I'm joining you this morning purely on an introductory basis. I attended CCI, like a lot of vendors, uh, I did, uh, had a booth there and we share a professional colleague relationship, Tara Marshall, Redola. Uh, she's a good friend of mine from some volunteer work that I've done in my career. And, uh, she just made a brief introduction with me and Commissioner Haas, um, and I just thought I should share kind of what our services are and see if there might be a fit for any of your needs. I'm not coming here today assuming you need anything, but just thought I'd like some ideas, have food for thought for you all. So, um, I've been in public finance twenty years, so I've done nothing else in my professional career and I've covered Colorado that entire time. Um, I've spent a lot of time in small places in Colorado, which makes me very proud because oftentimes they don't always get the help that they need. And, uh, I've spent, uh, a lot of my career also volunteering my time. So public education is very important to me when it comes to public finance because I think public finance is a much bigger world than just bonding and borrowing, um, quite a bit bigger than that. And so, um, I volunteer my time with Downtown Colorado Incorporated. They are a nonprofit membership organization that helps and provides technical assistance to communities, uh, typically municipalities, helping them revitalize and redevelop their downtown portfolios. Okay? And so today I sit on that, uh, boards, uh, on that nonprofit board as their treasurer, uh, which makes me real proud, um, given the time that I've put in. And so with, between my day job of being an investment banker, which I'll go into in a few minutes, and between my volunteer work, there, there's quite a bit of exposure I've gotten in public finance and it's really led me to believe that public finance isn't just about borrowing, bonding, and loans. Uh, it's quite a bit bigger than that. And what I mean by that is that there are a lot of, uh, tools and opportunities out there that don't necessarily involve borrowing or bonding, okay? Um, your Urban Renewal Authority is a really good example of that, okay? They don't necessarily have to borrow or, uh, uh, get their money via lending or loaning, but what they do do is they're able to capture that tax increment. Um, and so what I'm here to talk to you today about is what do we provide, what services can we provide and how that might be a fit to what your needs might be. So as a registered investment bank, there are two roles that we can serve, uh, the county or that can be served. We have the investment banking role and then we have the municipal advisor role, okay? And the SEC kind of bifurcated those two roles in 2014 with some new rules. As an investment banker, I would be helping the county specifically with a bonding or borrowing need. But in a municipal advisory capacity, I have the ability to look at a whole wide variety of needs and potential, uh, needs, uh, with advisory consulting services. So not necessarily having a bond or borrowing linked to it, municipal advisory services can really help look at a number of different things. So I like to use recent examples as, uh, for your consideration. So earlier this year, I assisted Marchalatic County. They had a piece of property that they wanted to sell and I helped provide advisory and analysis services to say, hey, how much can this property be worth? Uh, is there another use that you'd like to consider for that property? What is the highest and best use of that property? Okay? And I'm actually talking to a neighboring county, to you, about that very service, about looking at what county's assets are, okay? So you have cash, then you have property, you have water rights. Those are all assets. And so what I can do in advisory consulting capacity is really help you look at those assets and see if they're being used to their highest investment use, okay? So advisory services can focus on investment of cash on hand. Are you doing everything you can do? I'm sure you are in the finance staff, doing a great job of getting as much juice, as much, uh, interest rate on your cash as possible, right? Uh, water rights and property, you know, are there properties they want to let go and sell in the open market or do you want to consider those properties for another use potential? What I'm seeing right now with a lot of my clients is they have excess property and they want to know how they can use that to rejuvenate their communities. So one instance, a municipality's got several surface parking lots. Well, what they're going to, what they're considering doing is using those, uh, for consideration to developers for developing on that property. See, that puts you in a power position when it comes to negotiating with developers because you might have a piece of property that they would really like to build on, but maybe, you know, they need a little help making the project happen. So perhaps you could convey that property as part of the larger development, uh, transactions. Okay? So, uh, another thing is regarding development is development feasibility. So let's say you have a developer coming to you and say, hey, I'd like to build this, okay? And I think, you know, the developer says, I think it will generate X amount of property tax or sales tax or what have you. What I can look at is a number of different things. I could look at the developer's pro forma's and financials to make sure that they kind of, uh, are what they say they are. A lot of times, you know, I represent, uh, clients where they are presented with a developer proposal and I vet that developer proposal. And I'll present findings and conclusions on that developer proposal, or I'll present any holes or mistakes or oversights that I see in that proposal. Okay? So again, these are advisory services. In, in an advisory role, commissioners, I actually serve a fiduciary interest team. So that means your interests are above mine and before mine. And in investment banking capacity, I'm only working with you in an arms-length commercial transaction. Okay? So each of our engagement policies, and this is the same for any other investment bank you may consider, is there's an investment banking contract and then there's an advisory services contract. And in a lot of the advisory services contract, it says we serve you as fiduciary. Okay? And so that was a distinction that the SEC made in 2014 was, um, that municipal advisor role having a fiduciary duty. The investment banking role does not, okay? And so when it comes to those, uh, advisory consulting services, I'm serving your best interests. In investment banking role, I would argue, I'm still serving your best interests in, and still in the fiduciary capacity, but our contracts don't say that, they're not allowed to. So, uh, when it comes to that, I just thought that was an important distinction between those two roles. Uh, and don't go slide by slide, commissioner, I think you, commissioners, I think you've picked up on that. I find that boring. If you don't want to hear, just go slide by slide. A lot of, of the information I've provided to you talks about our investment capabilities, investment banking capabilities, where do we rank ashley and all that good self settling bonds? And we do a lot of that. But what I will say, in a year like 2022, there's a lot more funding mechanisms than there is bonding this year. So bonding is actually down quite a, quite a significant percent. So counties and other local governments like you across the country are borrowing less at about a clip of thirty percent. One of the reasons, there's a lot of reasons that go into that, which I won't detail all of them, but one of the reasons is a lot of infrastructure and federal stimulus money. You guys are getting some of those allocations and, uh, your peers across the country and in-state are using those funds instead of borrowing, okay? One analysis I can certainly do is provide, if you've got a, uh, a project that you would like to use some of that infrastructure funding for, I could do kind of a return on your investment analysis as well, right? So what are you thinking of using that money for if you've not already earmarked it, which could be a, uh, very much a possibility? But again, anything that you're looking at and you're like, well, I'd just love a little more information, basically that's where I come in, in a consulting or advisory capacity. Okay? Now, in a consulting advisory capacity, I, uh, someone like me can represent you on general terms. So you guys pick up the phone and anything, uh, from here to the sun, uh, public finance related, you call me at that. Or the contract and the engagement can be more specifically tailored to a specific need or a specific deliverable or service, okay? And so with that, I think that there's a couple of things that I, I share with you. I don't know how much time you want to give me this morning, commissioners.
Keep calling if you have some more information.
Oh, yes. Okay. Great. So, uh, I talked about public finance being much bigger than just bonding. So one of the slides, I'll just, uh, draw your attention to now right now, but perhaps later, is slide 10, uh, where I share my observations and considerations. The first thing I mentioned is free money, okay? That is usually the first question I ask my clients is what free money have you been going after? Are, is there any free money that perhaps you're not going after that you should, okay? So I just mentioned a few of those opportunities that I've seen, um, because to me, let's always chase the free money first, always. So I'm a little unusual to my peers and competitors in that regard, um, who go straight to, hey, what's your bonding or financing need? I typically start, well, well, what do you have first and what kind of free money are you chasing? Because ultimately that should be the first money in, in a lot of projects. If you have to borrow, you kind of want that to be kind of a last kind of resort decision, right? And, um, you know, I mentioned private placements. And, you know, I mentioned private placements. Again, this is just good for thought for staff and for the commissioners. So, there's two ways that bonds or financing can be kind of culminated in public finance. So, you can package a bond like a security and sell it in the public market in what's called a public offering, okay? And that's the bond market I referenced that's down 30% this year. Private placements are just municipal borrowing via bonds with banks instead of the public market. And it's been a very well-established market in Colorado, private placements. So, what that means is instead of packaging it like a security, okay, and selling it in the public market, you're working with one or two individual banks as lenders, okay? And what that does is it cuts down on upfront costs and can, in some cases, end up with more flexible terms. I only mention that to say, hey, you know, bonding has been done basically the same way since the first municipal bond was issued in the 1900s, or 1800s, excuse me. First municipal bond in the country was issued for the Erie Canal construction, okay? And so, bonds haven't really been much different, other than some regulation over the last 100, 150 years. Private placements is just another way to do it and another way I look at the business. To me, you know, you can always go back and do it the same way we've been doing for 150 years. It's my job to present as many options to you as possible, whether it be in an advisory capacity or an investment banking capacity. I'm always going to say, there's more than one way to do this. Let's look at those, and what is the cost benefit of the first way, and then your alternative? And I always present those. So, to me, I very much approach this with, I'm going to throw a lot of information at you if I get to present any findings or work for you, because I'm passionate about you all being as informed as you possibly can be when it comes to either bonding, development, et cetera. So, I've really prided myself on working on challenging projects. I'm trying, I'm working on a lot of affordable housing projects right now, for example. Not, I'm only working as investment banker on one of them, and then the other two, I'm working in advisory capacity, just to see if all the math works out, right? Because what I'm finding with a lot of the DCI membership that I represent as a board member, but those that I also represent in my day job, affordable housing is probably the second or third topic discussed usually when I sit down with someone. And so, it's a really acute need right now, and there's no one way really to do it. I'm seeing communities, whether it be via the county or via the municipality, they're all doing kind of their own thing, okay? Housing authorities, interestingly enough, aren't playing as large a role as I would expect. And so, municipalities and counties are now having to find kind of either traditional or unique ways to fund some of those projects and provide incentives for developers. So, another thing that we could talk about is what incentives, if any, would you ever consider for a developer? What incentives do you have available as a county government to a developer? Are you even interested in offering incentives? If not, great, but if you are interested, I could at least present some options for consideration. And that's really what the advisory consulting role does as the municipal advisor, is it helps you analyze and understand things better so you can make more informed decisions. And that's really in the advisory role, I'm your guide, I'm your meat shield, I'm your protector. Again, as a fiduciary, I'm representing you and your best interests. Couple of other things, you know, again, to mention, borrowing conditions are very challenging right now for a variety of different reasons. I think what you're starting to see is some developers, they're starting to see projects penciled out less, not more, because of rising costs and rising labor costs. So, supply chain, commissioners, staff, you've all heard these concerns, they're really affecting the cost of development, okay? And so, a lot of times, I might ask these advisor to clients who are working on development projects is, hey, you know, is the developer asking for a reasonable rate of return on their money, right? Not, this isn't public money, this is private money. It's my job to say, hey, is the developer trying to squeeze too much profit out of this deal, and by doing that, not making the deal possible? That's, you know, part of my scope of services when looking at a developer. I look at, looking at a developer, I look at the developer as well, making sure that they can get the financing they need to finish your product, project. Because what I'm starting to see are strains where projects are getting started and change orders are starting to come in, and you never want to be in a place where there's a project just sitting there halfway done or with a foundation. We certainly got enough of those from the Great Recession. So, again, I mentioned all of this, this is, in my role capacity, can help you anticipate and plan for these types of things. A couple of last things I'll leave you with. Slide 11 kind of details some of the advisory consulting services that maybe I haven't mentioned specifically, commissioners. Again, I talk about, you know, capital planning and, you know, how do you build up the sources of capital for a project, all right? Do you use 90, 100% cash? I could do an analysis, please say why you should consider doing all cash or why you should consider doing all cash. Again, maybe that's, again, a board policy that you wanted to use, let's say, all cash for a particular project. I guess I'm not necessarily there as a dissenting opinion, but just there to show you what the alternative is, okay? Because ultimately, I'm, my will is in your direction, basically, when I serve as an advisor. So, you say, Troy, we'd like to consider this. I go and work on that and present my findings. You know, again, debt issuance and oversight is something that we do quite a bit of at Northland, but it's not everything we do. And we also look at current, you know, borrowings and lease purchases. Are you still borrowing at the most favorable terms that you possibly can? The nice thing that we are seeing with the jump in interest rates is we are starting to see a little more return on cash, but we're also starting to see some, some early debt payment that actually makes sense. So, I've actually got a client came to me, Troy, saying, hey, I'd like to look at what early debt repayment looks like for me. We're not looking to borrow anything new, we're just looking to see if we can be more efficient in-house. So, that's another thing I'll mention. And then, lastly, I think I'd say that the investment and policy management is something that I've also worked on. So, through my work with Downtown Colorado Incorporated, I actually put together a 30-page policy document for a urban renewal authority, okay? But what that allows me to do, and what I've kind of looked at throughout my entire career is, hey, there are certain board policies that make a lot of sense, right? So, unbalanced policy, for example, is a great one that I like to go to. Is there one? What is it? How does it work? Is it really effective for the county, or is it limiting for the county? So, that's one that I look at quite a bit. I do look at debt policies and have helped draft debt policies for my clients as well. So, I'm not necessarily trying to institute more policy. In some cases, it helps as a guiding document. For me, in regards to the urban renewal policy I drafted, I made the document purposely flexible. I didn't put any real rigidity into that document, because to me, a policy document isn't supposed to be necessarily black and white. It's supposed to be a guide and risk management tool. And if you use it that way and use it to your discretion as a board or as a commissioner, I think those can be really powerful tools. So, that concludes my comments. I really appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to come down. I always prefer to be in person, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Troy. Yes, just a couple of comments. It's more of a statement of the state of the county, Los Angeles County, and this is a test to our finance director, Chris Dolan, our administrator assistant, and the entire staff, we are debt-free.
Yes, yes.
Los Angeles County has no debt, other than a few vehicles recently purchased.
Yes.
And other than that, the commissioners in the past have kept this county debt-free, not against any of our buildings or facilities. However, Commissioner Lopez was staying here with the non-funding bandages at the state level, the legislature. It might come a day when we might need to do so, such as our county checkers. Is this type, one of those types of facilities going to be something that your, your company could assist us?
Sure.
In a program or finding the funding with DOLA?
Yes.
With USDA and all the organizations to assist us, something like that?
No, absolutely, dear, I appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that. Listen, that's a form of lease purchase financing, so Gannison County is a really faithful, long-term client of mine. I financed a jail for them, as well as their new administration and judicial building, using a form of lease purchase, Commissioner. That is the common way to finance those types of projects in Colorado. And I really appreciate you adding DOLA, USDA in there, Commissioner, because I'm always going to, that's, again, it'd be the first two boxes on my checklist when I talk to my clients is, what free money are we going after? Let's talk about the DOLA application cycles, let's make sure we're considering all of that. And yes, so, what I, what I really like to think of myself as, is really creative with those assets, you know? For example, I'm doing an affordable housing project in Gannison County where they're using the units themselves as collateral for the lease purchase. That's a little unusual, but affordable housing is such an acute need that they're having to do that. But they won't exhaust free money opportunities, they've got some ARPA funding that's going to go into the project, so that's really, really important, yeah. I appreciate you mentioning that.
What I'll do is I'll give the sheriff an elaborate, and have him reach out to our staff, their behalf and staff, and they can have a discussion or a discussion. If that's something you would like to move forward with, Commissioner Lopez said there's a lot of unfunded stuff, might take that session regarding our regional facilities.
Ah, yes.
So, it might be, maybe services or...
Yeah, Gannison County was facing similar issues when we did their financing in 2014.
So, one last question regarding that. counties, you know, we are tied to a venture policy.
Yes, yes.
Or have the service, or are you not the only one that does this in the state?
No, sir.
So, we would not probably need to have that in our discussion with all of the rates and so forth, other services.
Sure.
As a reminder.
Of course, no, no, sir. As I like to say, I'm just looking for at-bats and opportunities to compete, very comfortable with competition.
Thanks for being here, Troy.
Oh, you bet.
We have a discussion with CCI, just a little background, Terry Marshall, who we promised to talk to you about the whole judicial system, and also our industrial part, considering the opportunities. Thanks for being here.
I do have one other question.
Yes, please, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
I guess here in Los Angeles County, we go, we go, we go home, right?
Yes, sir.
One of the, my question, when you are adopting a pro forma?
Yes.
I in projection?
Yeah.
I, just glancing at the rates right now, between 8.5% interest rate up to 10%, how in this time of challenging, which is really a tough, tough inflationary period, that if the economy is not careful, we're going to be going into a different phase from inflation to whatever comes after that?
Yes, yes.
What are you seeing with counties and municipalities when proposing a pro forma that indicates a multi-year liability, correct? That, that, are you able to adjust later on? Would you be able to adjust those rates as the market and the economy would hopefully adjust to?
Yes, no, absolutely, Commissioner. And in fact, something we do a little different at Northland is, I build custom pro forma models, and I actually hand them off to staff for them to use as a tool going forward. So, I try to make my, my models just complex enough to consider all of the scenarios that you're outlining. And what I am telling you, what I will tell you, Commissioner, because I'm being a lot more conservative with my pro forma now than I was even two months ago. So, now I'm looking at, for example, project contingencies, okay? Maybe they were 10, 15%, maybe as soon as a year ago. They're now easily double that, if not 45% contingency for potential cost overruns. So, I really do try to look at every facet of a project, and I do, it's really my job to help you anticipate some of those bumps in the road and to structure a, an appropriate development or financing, if there is one. To me, I think if I have the privilege of working with the county after procurement, I think, you know, I'm, you're going to get every option possible for me. And again, you're going to get a very conservative approach, because I'm that physically, personally, myself, in my own life. And to me, I'm counseling all my clients right now that you have to be even more conservative with your pro forms.
One last question.
Sure.
Go to your website and find out what counties and or municipalities are doing business with your company.
So, we don't have our specific, well, we have our transaction lists online, Commissioner, but they're not very well organized, they're all, it's just a big one long list. So, what I'll do is I'll send you, all of you, a custom list of my, my projects that I've worked on and the clients that I've represented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
The second, the senator that we have is a member in our corporation, Mr. Allen Barber. Welcome.
I want to thank you, each of you, for the opportunity to be here, and Mr. Jordan Camp's patience with the table, because I lost the first presentation on computer failure, and I didn't have a Mac.
What's your name, sir?
Allen Barber. So, I would have been here two years ago, but COVID just stopped everything. And it's frightening, that, because it's just, everything stopped. So, before I get into the full presentation, I just want a few, few comments. This is your presentation, so Mr. Jordan Camp has it, you keep it. I'm not taking a little, I've copied that three times, so it's yours. And then, you've confirmed a lot of my concerns about what's going on between what I would call urban dwellers and rural landowners and producers in this, all this stuff that's going on that you've expressed concerns with. I actually, well, diversion, I actually grew up in Indiana, in rural Indiana, and I hate watching the rural environment, you shouldn't lose it. So, and debt, our, until we couldn't make any money out of it. My uncle farmed for a long time, so I've been around that for, you know, my childhood years, but I enjoy it. So, in fact, the other part is, debt and I'm kind of a Russian as a unique business partner. When I'm working with nonprofits, I'm not charging many. So, if I can help you in any way, give me a call. Now, if I have expenses and somebody wants to compensate for it, I'm not going to say no, but all the work I'm doing, I will do it with you. And if I can help you in other ways to decide, give me a call, so I'll be there. So, let's get into this. You know, I started out growing Los Angeles County economy through ag and coal, nothing ash and gas. So, going next slide. I'm trying to read what I wrote. The Los Angeles County has a long history of ag industry. And one of the, I'll just go through this. One of the big things is water. Los Angeles County needs a long-term reliable water source. So, I'm aware of, um, air green resources, and I was afforded a...
Would you use my computers?
Sure, it's okay, thanks. Commissioner, thanks, thank you.
No, I haven't heard that either, too. But I read the articles.
Okay. Okay, now we're back. Water supply is pretty bad, which, without water, you can't grow anything, you're just, land is just, various from year to year, you have no rain, so it's not reliable. Received a forward email from Mark Sexton of Evergreen, and his comment was, they can supply millions of gallons of water out of those coal and methane wells. And once, we have to remove all the harmful elements, and one element in there is selenium, which is devastating through livestock. So there are other things in there. And really, those CBM wells, after they're depleted, natural gas become water wells. So those can last for a long time. When I talked to Pioneer, they said that they've mapped the cases with the drill. And there are areas of water they went through, they had to seal off, the cases. He said, after the methane's depleted, you're gonna go back in and perforate those cases at those levels, and that gives you additional water supplies. So there's a lot of water underground. And I like to take variation of Governor Polis' new initiative is, the heat beneath our feet, he wants to do some geothermal type stuff. Well, how about water beneath our feet? Because we have a lot of, we're just sitting, and everybody talks about conservation, but no one talks about new water sources. And these are new water sources. You also have another pot, potential water source, I don't know if the Aussies are gonna do, I've been to a mine, but that mine has a lot of water, because mines are big water. And if you work with Evergreen, it's an example of ag and oil and gas guys working together to improve agriculture. Because long after the gas is gone, you can still use that water, once it's drained, to supply new water.
So perhaps as we go through the presentation, please pardon my interruption, because I do have a question.
Go ahead, I want to...
As we go through the process, right now, we have CBTH, the Evergreen maker said A B C D. But CBTH is regulating the water that comes up, and if the selenium that is coming out of that mine and/or the wells that are already frapped, I would imagine there is technology to neutralize the selenium in there, or at least a process that we can achieve 100% usable water. So the rulemaking process that we're going through right now with C O G C, the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission, there is rulemaking. And basically, it's gonna be next to impossible to penetrate that wall, because the regulations are being put up so high that we get promises on paper, but when we go and attempt to work with them, there is a discrepancy between the two, Mr. Barber. That's, I hope, pardon my interruption, but I think that's, that is proper to be embedded in the conversation.
Yes, and I agree with you, and they're running, I mean, these rules are getting, this is my personal opinion, these rules are getting ridiculous. Because they're preventing you from doing the things that you need to do. And maybe this is something you take up as a legislature to say, wait a minute, we can name this, we can do this, this, and this. Help us, legislature. Or, I'll jump ahead, I talked to Governor Polis at the Western Governors' meeting last month about this project. And, because I've been working on this for a long time, it was delayed, and he seems in favor of it. So he needs to understand that the water can be cleaned, so that you guys can use it for your uses. Because one thing that we need down here, so we, and, what, last 37 years I've been here, I don't remember how many times, so, all these, we need. We need that water, you need it for your camp, you need it for your crops, you need it for these things. And if they don't allow that, again, this is my problem with these urban dwellers and rural people. The urban dwellers, because of the legislature, Boulder, Denver, Fort Collins, they're creating all the rules, and they don't seem to understand rural areas and the needs of rural areas. So, one of the things I have here is, moving on, Los Angeles County Commissioners, they want to consider a water district. Because that water is yours unless there are changes in the water. It's not surface water, it's not stream water, it's your, it could be your water. So you need to be able to use your water for this. And the last part on this slide is P W T, Processed Water Technologies. I will mention this, I am the president and co-founder of this company. And we have a long history of cleaning these things. We can remove the selenium. And when we were talking to Pioneer, and I'll get to this in a minute, we were talking to Pioneer, and this was before all these regulations. What we saw in that record, in those water analysis, we thought we could clean it to 97%, recover the water. That means 3% is going back into injection well, 3% is what we call concentrated, what everybody else calls flood or polluted water. So you're cutting the cost of Evergreen by only having them inject the jet back into their injection wells, so you're saving the injection plant. And then that provides you with water. I haven't seen a new water analysis, our team hasn't seen that, but I'm gonna say 90%. We talked about it, let's say 90%, we think we can get that. We could maybe get higher, but we have to receive the water analysis before we do anything. And this team has built these water plants to clean water all over the world. Spain, New Zealand, U.S., Canada, and very successful. We, there's no water on the planet, but even the people, we get, we get Siemens, Pele, all the big guys. So we're confident in what we can do. So let's go next slide. Okay. Reliable and consistent new water source provides the means to consist agricultural growth. And going back to what you're saying about the, all the regulations, API has a, so one they have, they have a Denver Regional Office. And API would work with you on these regulations. I've talked to them, not for a while, but I've talked to them, and Colorado Oil and Gas Association may be willing to work with you too, to lobby in the legislature, so you can do what you need to do in Los Angeles County for that coal, that methane, and all that stuff. There are other people out there who will assist. And I think there are a number of Western Governors who could jump on this with too, Gordon in Wyoming, Burden in North Dakota. Go ahead.
So, and you know, one of the, we had a senior group of us, and I had a couple months ago, an hour conversation with them. What is happening right now that, regardless of political affiliation, senators from western parts of the United States are coming together to address the water issues? Because we're having such a problem on this part of the United States, that for once, water is bringing it to the table, but without, and we know it's gonna be politicized, I understand that, because it's part of the whole thing.
However, anything in D.C. is gonna be politicized.
They're certainly talking about that. So there is gonna be, and he made a comment that, I believe in the last couple months, these western regional United States senators are gonna be getting together to address those. But, and then also, just a little footnote there, the heat and the bigger feed, the Raton Basin, where I happened to spend my career trying that state, the Raton Basin has one of the largest geothermal pools of heat anywhere. If we're gonna start getting energy out of that, water is also gonna be impacted.
Yes.
Because you're gonna heat water when you're extracting that geothermal energy. So this is beginning to make the bigger picture come together, so, go ahead, sir.
Okay. And I appreciate your questions as we're going along, because we need to discuss them as we're going along, not afterward when you forgot it. So, here's the, here's a new model. First water can be used to grow out half another crop's beef cattle. Because cattle ranching is a big down here, driving from somewhere, from Weddell County to work, to Trinidad. If you look out across Site 25, and you're seeing all these herds, and they all eat water they only grew from. It's $43 million of our industry for this part of the state to guess. So it's a huge industry. And, I'm sure that means, we need better resources than Maryland. Anyway, third, ratchets blockers could be established to sell this beef to a processor for a higher value than what you're getting now. And as I understand it, the multinationals are saying, we'll pay you this much for your, I had a cattle and that's it, take a leap. So you can do, that blockers can do negotiations. I can be blunt sometimes. And, you know, Par deal, J V S, United Beef, and I know that J V S and United Beef are now foreign owned, so that Par deals are all over the planet. Fourth beef processing plant could be built in Los Angeles County. To purchase, then produce, process the beef, to sell in U.S. markets and foreign markets. One of the problems in U.S. markets, I've been, done this before years ago, is difficult to get a new product on a store shelf. But I think there are a lot of people, you know, these urban dwellers who love natural grass-fed beef, at a good price, and know it's fresh, know where it's coming from, and know it's Colorado beef. If you buy J V S, who knows what you're gonna find? It could be Brazilian, Canadian, or the others. And then President Biden recently stated, there should be more local beef processors to compete with multinationals. So that is one thing maybe in our favor. And as I said, I spoke with Governor Polis about that new model, and he's interested in it, and he seems to support it. And I mentioned this to a secret researcher at Ag America, at the W J A meeting, you meet a lot of people at these meetings. And I may suggest, maybe some kind of commissioners when we go to these meetings, to meet with governors and talk about your concerns, not just with the Colorado governor, but with governors from other states. Because there you can talk to them, I mean, they're, it's easy to talk to them, getting them, meeting at their office, with groups. At W J A, you walk up to them, start talking, so it's a nice environment, cool, that's the way it was designed. And when I talk about foreign markets, I spend a lot of time, I spend a lot of time in China, I know that's not popular right now. I'm doing what I think I need to do. Transfer the class to foreign markets. They want American beef. I've had numerous conversations with Chinese, I'm working with Jones and France, I told this to some of the representatives, they said, how do we get this beef, we're tired of the Australians. And it could be a large market for Los Angeles County. China supermarkets could add this to their land, it's easier to get a bear, a bear. A very good friend of mine in Beijing, she's an attorney, she, I talked to her about this, she said, I don't let me know, because I'm the general counsel to one of the large super chains in China, I don't know who it is. So there are people out there that assist. And we've talked about this, you put a QR code on that pack machine, that QR code tracks where it was raised, so what range? The processing plant, the ship to China, to that container, ever lose power and thaw the beef and then refreeze it. They have all of that information, and they know it's from Los Angeles County.
So when you're working, I think, for the Ag America, I believe, and I went and watched several videos online, what are you hearing? When I know farmers, and we've heard this to Colorado counties, country of origin, and I'm gonna turn it over to my commissioner that has raised beef all weekend. A country of origin, why are you hearing those large groups, why are they so opposed to doing this? Is it disadvantage to the American worker?
I know, I know, and a lot of this is coming out of D.C., I cannot explain anything, listen to you, that's coming out of D.C. other than it's a mess. So, I wish I had an answer for that, but, a country of origin, you have QR code on it that shows it's American. And the Americans would know, they can buy it there, but it's coming from the U.S. Again, J V S, you go, Denver, well, here you go Safeway, pick up a package of beef. Where was it raised, where was it processed? We have no idea, it's a package of beef. It could be from Colorado, with plant in Greeley, or it could be from a plant in Bristol, we have no idea. So it's not marked, so I like the idea of marking the beef, so the Americans consumer knows where it's coming from. And perhaps if the American consumer knows where it's originally, they'll buy the American beef rather than Brazilian, or Canadian, or whatever. So there are two parts to this, one, you know, and the other, I don't know. And I'm finally gonna be able to go to China later this year, so I can pursue this in China, if you want me to do it. I'm not gonna do anything like that. Because I'm here, I'm talking about it. This is your project, and why is it? Okay, now the next one, Colorado is in the Chicago Council District, in China. I had dinner with Council General Zhao Junan, I think it was a June, a June, yes. And discussed with him the ambition to visit China. He wants to know how he can help Colorado, and how he can specifically alternate out, he comes. So he usually visits capital cities, meets the governor, meets the mayor of the, I've met all these routines before, I know the criteria, and they're not very clear. The opportunity for him to meet county commissioners here and talk to you about your concerns and your problems, and how he may be able to assist. He's not gonna do anything that, get politically in trouble, or you in trouble, but he just wants to come and talk and see how we can work together. And the, I was at the embassy in February, I was surprised how this developed. Number three at the embassy wanted to talk to the executive director of the Western Governors' Association, and how they can help China, help the Western Governors. and how they can help China, help the Western governors. So, there is a desire to help the West within this leadership. And, he could also assist with, because Chinese is going to have a hard time coming here and doing things. He could also assist if he decides to build a processing plant. And, I, I don't want to skip ahead, but, my original concept was, how the Chinese invest in building a plant, they own the plant, they work with blockchain, all they own is the plant. What government governments want through, Chinese wanting to build a processing plant, that's seven hundred and forty million, national press, politicians are all over this. I would never ask you to do that, because you have national media down here, and you don't want. So, there's other ways to do this. Now, the other thing we talked about is Temple Arrow, here in Trinidad. Because I know, I talked to the guys who are working on the restoration. There is a museum in Shanghai, the Shanghai Jewish Refugees Museum. Very little known, China saved thirty thousand Jews from World War II. They had to leave Europe, they couldn't go anywhere. Chinese Council General issued thousands and thousands of visas for Jewish people to go to Shanghai. It's at least thirty thousand people, and China has this museum. So, I have the link to the museum and a YouTube video, so you can see what this is all about. But, it would be interesting to have a relationship between that museum in Shanghai, Jewish museum, and that yard. So, that tells you how they deal with this. And they rebuild it, they restore it. So, you'll see photos of that and Temple Arrow. Because, he likes this idea, and wants to do it. So, that's something to consider. Now, I get into the other stuff, this I just covered. And, as I said, he wants to discuss how to cooperate with commissioners and topics of regional interest. He really wants to do this. He wants to come and share. And, he wants to spend a few days here. It's not just spending overnight, like, he wants to spend a few days here, meet people, and want to have a few meetings, want to do that. And, one of the things he told me at dinner, he said, the US and China need to work together to work on this inflation problem. And, he also mentioned drugs. So, I'm certain ethanol is a problem down here. And it would be good to talk with you about this. And I said, I mentioned this, he says, I'm willing to talk about it. I'll talk to commissioners about how we can work together with this. So, he's open to these things. Now, before he could come, he would need an invitation letter from the local stands and county commissioners to invite him here. And if he decides to do that, I will assist in writing a letter, a number of these. So, another routine. I shouldn't say that, another routine. And then, the next one, Evergreen Resources. Do you want to save some water? That provides a lot of water down here. And, I know, I think that Evergreen is a member of the Colorado Water and Gas Association, and the, I can't remember the right guy, I was around, Colorado Petroleum Association, or something like that. So, those two would work with you, especially in these regulations. As she's left, but I talked to, basically, the chief lobbyist, the foreco, and she said, I want to talk to you about this, we want to talk to you about this. Because we need to show how we can utilize producer water, provide water for the Western US, and specifically Colorado. So, I'm quite certain that they will work with you on how. And then, the other thing that no one's really talking about yet. China needs a lot of natural gas. They consider gas free energy. All of Asia considers it, and now Europe considers it as gas free energy. So, they're looking to set contracts with producers from the outside. So, the producers make more money, because if it's sold at a Henry level, it's the brokers making more money. It's not, it's, it's like farmers, when Trump was saying farmers are making a lot of money off of all this stuff in China, it wasn't farmers. It was multinationals. So, one way you could get that gas out here into China is a containerized version. These are forty-foot containers, high-pressure. You fill them in the field, and liquidate, gas supply through, liquefy in the field, put it in the containers, you put it on rail, ship it to the west coast. They ship on cargo ships, not those big LNG containers. So, they get to China, and they can send those containers to the local gas companies in China. Those gas companies can buy that gas. And it's more convenient for them, because China has very, doesn't have a pipeline system like we do. So, that is an option. That will keep more jobs entering in Los Angeles County long-term. And, that means, you know, a little more tax, a little cap. Processing plant should be a good tax base for that. And, you know, China may be willing to invest in the oil, or the gas field liquidation plant, because those are not cheap. China could be willing to do that. You set up a system where they ship a container there, they ship the empties back, they refill them, they ship on this opposite side. So, those are the things that I would say very quickly are talking about. Now, I talked about containerized to a number of people in China, and including the chairman of the Shanghai Energy Exchange. He had never thought of this before. Now, I can never remember, always remember this meeting, he said, Alan is just giving us a great new idea, all this containerized. Now, there are people who say it won't work because you have too much burn off of the gas in the containers. I talked to a gentleman, Chinese gentleman, who did this out of Canada, and he said, costs are almost the same. So, it is the way to do this. And, as I said, that's my presentation. I'm open for questions. Before I leave, I have a card for each one of you. I know Mr. Parker has my contact information. My card for each one of you. My mobile number is on that. Don't give the mobile number. Because I don't want to be harassed. Well, thank you so much for being here, Mr. Parker. Commissioners, any questions? Just a thank you for your presentation today. We know water is a lot here in Los Angeles County. Oh, yeah. Until we see some changes up in the, in the whole genome up there, in COGCC and CDPHE, realizing that, and how valuable a resource it is in Los Angeles County, that water. It's going to be nothing about it. But, hopefully, we can be advocating the use of that water to do in Los Angeles County, as these board county commissioners, the past four years, can do so for the world. But, I like the ideas that you have here, and I appreciate you covering up the presentation, and Mr. Parker, and me. If you want me to go to a meeting with you up there, I can talk about the water. I can bring my chief technology officer. We can talk about this, because he's, he's been doing this for years. I have a good gentleman who's on the road, because he's originally from China, he's in the US, he's worked in mining water and water for years. I've mentioned his name, and this is, I can regret it. So, we have the team. As I said, I think we're the best team in the business. And, my analogy for the team, if you watch the movie Armageddon, we're the drill team. We're all those crazy guys who do stuff. But, we get it done. And, the gentleman who unfortunately died when he had to take over, you know, create a new company. How's a lot of us, somebody said, this is impossible. I'll say, man, the difficult we do right away, impossible just takes us a little longer. And that's all right. So, here I am, I'm here to help you. Call me anytime. And, get Tony back his laptop. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Yeah, well, that's, that's what drives me nuts, is all these people say. Oh, it's a waste of money. It's a waste of money. It's a waste of, that's useless. Thank you so much, Mr. Parker. Really appreciate it. Okay, moving along, we have the Sopras Memorial. I think we have two presenters. The minute is in your eyes.
Yes. Yes. It takes me a while.
That's okay. Can I actually get a bit drawn by Miss Martina as well?
Uh, yes. Do you all know Judy?
Be good.
I guess it was. She's a great coworker. I've known Judy since she was a tiny little girl.
You're welcome. I'm Mr. Parker, and you're quite welcome. We're county commissioners. Thank you for sending our presentation. I've had a opportunity to watch the documentary. Powerful, historical, and very, kind of a teary eye.
We've been at this for a long time. And that's the purpose of us being here. I am a local girl, grew up in Sopras, Colorado. Actually, when my father came back from World War II, we lived in Trinidad for a while. And then, we moved to Jansen, Colorado. So, I have a little history with old Chaco school. I went to first grade there, and actually kindergarten. And, one of my relatives used to own the water hole, you remember that place? It was in Vibe Place. But, so I have a long history, as well as Judy has. My purpose today, or my purpose today, is to ask a favor of all of you. Keeping the Sopras spirit alive has been the motto of ours. And I thank you for your time, and also thank you for your patience with us. First line, please. Coal camps have come and gone, and each was unique in its own way. The days of laughter and tears too soon fade into memories. As it was then, it is now. Time will take its toll, for none of us were promised rose garden. Sadly, so be it for Sopras. This is a quote from Echoes of Yesteryear, Martin Luther Patrick Donaghy. He was our neighbor in Sopras for many years. His father was the politician in Sopras, and I might say, he was a Republican, probably the only Republican in Sopras as a little girl. The rest of us were all Democrats, or whatever we were. Anyway, you can take the people out of Sopras, but you can't take Sopras out of the people. Sopras has a very unique history. Sopras Canyon is where it all began. Archaeologists say that this area of the Upper Purgatory River was used by the Indians for more than three thousand years. Native Americans living along the banks of the river constructed stone and adobe pavilions and farmed the area. Apache Indians lived in the area. History tells us that the first Spanish expedition in the Purgatory Valley was led by an Archeletta in sixteen sixty-four. By the way, Archeletta County is not related to me, that I know of. He was followed by Hilary entering through the mouth of Long's Canyon in seventeen oh six. Valverde in seventeen ten is credited with naming the Purgatory River, first known as El Rio de las Somas Pedriles in Purgatory, the River of Lost Souls.
Be sure and have a dance when you are old, like me. Come back with a wishing ball and say, down there is where I danced.
As early as eighteen forty-seven, coal veins were found in Los Angeles County. The town of Sopras was named after Aldridge B. Sopras, an early Trinidad surveyor, prominent pioneer of Trinidad, a member of the famous First Colorado Regiment of volunteers in the Civil War. A partnership was established with Francisco Gallegos to work in the coal mine in Sopras Canyon. On May twenty-eighth, eighteen eighty-eight, Aldridge Sopras sold the town of Sopras, all three hundred and twenty acres, to Denver Field Company for sixteen thousand dollars, later becoming the Sioux Mine. By the eighteen sixties, families began to settle in the Sopras Plaza area from parts of New Mexico, living on the banks of the Purgatory River, farming, raising livestock, and building homes of sun-dried adobe bricks. We know what those homes were. That the house that the government purchased from us was adobe walls. So, we didn't need air conditioning. It was warm in the winter and cool in the summer. The town of Sopras, of course, we are part of the state of Colorado, in Los Angeles County. The town had many little settlements. We call it Sopras Plaza, Upper St. Thomas. Then, St. Thomas, we had named Sopras, Jererville, Piedmont, and then the Sopras Canyon. And we all got along very well, amazingly well. Life in the day of a child in the coal mines.
Many children feared for their fathers' and family life. There were births, baptisms, confirmations, full days, funerals, graduations, but there was always a fear hanging over their heads. This may be the last time I see my father.
Sopras consisted of Sopras number one and number two mines, opened in eighteen eighty-six. The first coal was shipped in eighteen eighty-seven. In eighteen eighty-nine, output was two hundred and twenty-two, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand tons of coal. By eighteen ninety, the Sopras Mine was the largest producer of coal in the states of Colorado. Capacity was seventeen fifty tons per day, and yielded as much as twenty-two hundred tons in a ten-hour day. Sopras number one and two were two coal seams, or sixty feet apart. In nineteen nineteen, the peak population of Sopras was twenty-four hundred. Hotel, boarding house, four general merchandise stores, a brick schoolhouse, company store, Colorado Supply Number One, and some say nineteen saloons. I don't know that I believe that. We've always questioned that. And there was, they say a house of mammals, mammals, but I'm not sure where it was. Colorado Supply Number One was one of those stores that we had. Catholic, and there was one Protestant church, and it was located next to my grandmother's house. And it was located next to my grandmother's house. Uh, there was a stable, C and W Railway Depot, a daily trolley service to Trinidad and meet roads, a company-built houses. And you could sit down, they're all the same, but that was in the Sopras Canyon. The hard times in the 1920s and Depression was very, very difficult for the miners and their families. On March 24, 1922, there was a huge explosion on Sopras Number Two Mine. Gas and dust was ignited by an electric arc cutting machine. Seventeen men were killed. Jack Galdoso, foreman, lost his son and his son-in-law. The Romero family lost their father. The Lencic brothers died, and others included Rudolph Pysku, Giuseppe Bonato, Felix Malia, Antonio Bertetto, Pete Muzio, Francisco Amateus, Orloan Serano, Miguel Pandillo, Joe Mario, Max Kobe, and Pete Matano. Three were former servicemen, Pete Galdoso, Pete Savio, and Joey Marlowe.
If you love a place, you will never lose it if you keep it in your heart no matter what happens to it.
Mining consistently had the highest severity rate of injuries of any major industry. The harsh realities of stress of miners' lives had to be hard on the women and the children, living with the daily danger of mining accidents, not knowing if their husband, son, brother, sweetheart was coming home that night. In 1928, the CFMI owner closed all mine operations as demand for coal declined and economic reasons. In 1929, Jack Galdoso leased Number Two Mine from the CFMI and worked it until 1940, when it was closed. And here's a clearer picture of the little towns we call within Sopras. Again, Sopras Plaza, Upper, St. Thomas, St. Thomas, Main Sopras, Jarriville, Piedmont, and Sopras Canyon.
Towns of the B.C., Salons Canyon, developed and later Sopras, which was made up of Sopras Plaza, Main Sopras, St. Thomas, Jarriville, Piedmont, and Sopras Canyon.
Families such as Miguel and Manuel Ave, Horus, Long, settled. Then came other families, the Martinez's, the Nicolai's, the Clavette's, the Cuchas, the Antistas, Alicios, the Hills, Sanchez's, Montoya's, and Garcia families, Gonzalez, Casillas, Royce, Santa Stevan. It was located north of the Purgatory River. Upper, or Main Sopras, where I lived with my family, was across from the Black Bridge. It was made up of a group of families, Utaro, Sevins, Terri's, Lucilio's, Inci's, Rocco, and Andrew De Angelos. Andrew was my grandfather. Fantines, Farias, Amarali, Tamburelli, Ribusa's, Cerami, Ferries, St. Canaro, Gomez, Sanchez, Archeletta's, Menopases, Luceros, Luceros, Bucalas, Valdutos, Santa Steven, Martinez, Ribusa, Slonovic, Mira, Faro, Pusalter, Donaghy, and La Alentros. Main Sopras was a very busy place. There we had Lincoln School Grade 1 through 12, a gymnasium, a baseball game, and Sevins Grocery were located in Main Sopras. Most of the events held were in this area, including baseball, football, basketball. Sopras was a formidable competitor, especially with Primera. We had swings, we had teeter-tanders and slides on which to play. There was also a party for girls home ec. We had school band, and many of us participated. We had 4-H, HU, and Boy Scouts in the earlier years. There was also, and it was Colletti's Grocery Store. The old clubhouse was located in this area, as well as the coke buildings. There was an old church, and we slayed down Donaghy and Ferries, Hills. Kids played near the coke buildings, and we built tortoises.
St. Thomas included Upper and Lower St. Thomas, the Big Six Tavern, St. Thomas Church, frontier taverns, booths, silver dollar, granal's doors, bicycles, cars.
Families in this area included Martamano Salvatore and Judy, of which Judy's father was Salvatore. Louis De Angelos. This is interesting, there was another De Angelos family. We were not related, but we were from, my grandfather was from the same little town that the other De Angelos's were from, in Italy. And when Mary Jane Incidi and I went to Italy, I looked at this man, and he is walking down the street, and I said, "Mary, that looks like Tony Zambarella's brother." And she goes, "It does." So we went up and asked him. Sure enough, it was his brother, and he was much older. But Tony had come to America, and his brother chose to stay, which is amazing. Dalavan, Sevins, Martinez's, Menopases, Lucero. And I see Paul is a Lucero. Were you related to the Sopras people?
I'm married to a Lucero, so I'm not aware of any of the number of that area, but maybe they're out of here.
Bathas, Martinis, Royvals, Frenchmores, Richardson, Thomas, Sanchez, Lopez. We had Lopez's. Holpe, Bois, Subernally, the Hills, Martinez's, Lovatos, Casillas, Porta, Arreola, Peraro, Plathmans, Snarrows, and Santa Stevens.
St. Thomas families included V. Hills, Romero, Santa Stevens, Scovca, Vergellos, Rosetti, Andragon, Corner, Lowkowski, Archeletta, Rosane, Lopez, Lucilio, Mars, Ren, Zare, Anetti, Thompson, Lucilio, Long, Cassis, Plathman, Lovato, Torres, Coro, Leo, Simpson, Royval, Fortuna, Carter, Vasco, Chao, Aragon, Saro, Toman, Pacheco, Royval, Tambruzi, and Cavlin, Bonato, Balagante, Granal, Yonah, Sanatalli, Pacheco, and Chinga, Calerita.
St. Thomas Church was a place where faith was a big part of family life, from birth till death. The church was the center of baptisms, first holy communion, confirmation, weddings, and funerals. Jarriville families included Vinda, Louis, Punico, Ferries, Ruvines, Onawatis, Trojillos, Davies, Lyra, Buteros, Calunini, Aragon, Virgo, Manolos, Lucero, Calerita, Morella, Rodigaro, Matina, Yanis, Mars, or Baptistone, Osala, Colby, Veladi, Sanoski's, Benadini, Stajahar, Hurnings, Aragon, the Hill, Martinez, Lopez, Westman, Smith, Polak, Porta, Lovato, Santa Steven Doll, and Punicos. And grocery, Punicos was the place to get gas and food. Funny story. One day, this little man went to Vinda Punico's store, and he had run out of gas, and he said, "Vinda, could you take me, take me and my, drive my car to fill my gas, my car with gas, so I can go up to Adox and get groceries?" One, Punicos was a grocery store, and he asked him to drive him to the other grocer to get his groceries. I just didn't think that was the case. Keith Pope families included the Callans, the Beras, the Amatos, the Williams, Parkers, Lovatos, Pachetos, Martinez, McCray, Davies, Minzic, Lovatos, Sanchez, Sandoval, Di Bonno, Morgans, Lovato, Porches's, Blasi families. The Piedmont Orchidies was a bar, dance hall, a meeting place. Many women and dancers were dealt here.
It was a beautiful place to be from, Morena Archeletta.
In 1955, over 500 families were overwhelmed when Congress in the United States Corps of Engineers announced plans to construct a dam across the Purgatory River in the area that included Sopras. The progression was gradual. Because the town was unincorporated, families could not challenge the federal government's decision. We did not have the financial means to challenge these decisions. Because the town was incorporated, the offered price for our homes was lower than the normal home values. Many families had to go into financial debt to acquire a home in Trinidad or other locations. Many families lost their livelihoods, as well as a lifetime business. We believe that many of our citizens passed earlier than they should have because of the stress and the huge change in their lives. 1971, the last town was destroyed to make way for the Trinidad Lake State Park, which opened in 1981. Sopras Indians people made the ultimate sacrifice for the greater good of Los Angeles County, city of Trinidad, state of Colorado. The spirit of Sopras and the town lives under the determination and pride of its former residents. The blessing is that Sopras families moved to Trinidad and other areas where there were available jobs and communities. Engineers, architects, physicians, teachers, coaches, school administrators, pharmacists, business owners and workers, nurses, physicians, politicians, came from these families. We are a proud people still.
Reunions have been held in 1970, 1980, 1990, 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015, 2022, to make because of COVID. My senior father, Jim Collins, built and currently lives in Ranger, Colorado, is celebrating the Holy Mass during his celebration. Attendees have numbered from over 1,000 to current 250 after 50 years. As a generation who is currently serving as reunion attendees, we are concerned that there are only slight mentions of Sopras Indians people. There is a small plaque displayed at the amphitheater, and there are remains of a coke that was designed as a historical marker, which are material and can to be revealed.
We are here today to request that Los Angeles County officials work with us to help us construct a memorial for the people of Sopras and its communities in remembering the sacrifices of this living people. The Archeletta family will donate a tombstone from our grandfather Pete Archeletta's and great-grandfather Gene Patti, John Batista Ponassani's store in Sopras to preserve the Sopras history. Other families will donate other memorabilia. Perhaps the visitor's center could be expanded to include history of Sopras and a community's room.
In 2007, France's Historical Trinidad awarded the first recipient of the town of Los Angeles County for 100 years of war to the people of Sopras, Colorado. Pioneering mining community that embodies the spirit and history of Los Angeles County and the state of Colorado.
We were proud to receive the Felliers' proclamation on July 2 to call it Sopras, Colorado Day. So anything, anything at all, or any encouragement you can give us, we would like to ask you for your support. Perhaps it's maybe talking to the governor. We're not sure what processes of how to go about getting a memorial. But we just think it's sad that when we came home, we see this little plaque that's not even this big in front, sitting at the lake, and that's all that's remembered. Then the state of Colorado was announcing its annual affairs and programs for the year, and not one mention of the Sopras people and what we did to sacrifice. So I just think we need to have something for all the hearts that were lost and to keep perhaps the spirit of this people going forward. And as Alan was saying today, this county is very important to the state of Colorado. And water becomes the most important issue in our lives. And it's sad to say that there is the good and the bad. And here we are to present the good. Thank you all.
Thank you for the presentation. This really opens my eyes to something that I really couldn't respect of the losses that those families had. And I personally have utilized Trinidad Lake State Park for many, many years now. Even last week, I was officially leaving the Indian High School. I think the pain's pretty much faded off. And to the point where I've taken my children there multiple times over the years where we can't, and utilize the park and facilities may have put those into my life up on the upper ground. But putting perspective on losses that all the folks have lived there had to endure for me to enjoy this facility. So I thank you for your loss and role. And I would really like to take this in our vision with our table council and our commissioner, what we can do to help honor and remember those folks that grew within. And Joe Terry and I think about it very often. Uh, he's my good friend, and his brother also, my neighbor area of Los Angeles, my business, so.
Joe and Lee's worked on every reunion with all of us since it started. And Judy, you want to give those two books? I don't know if you're aware of this, but Alfred Ladenger was, lived in Sopras. His father was Jack Galdoso, who was the mine, uh, president, owner of the mine. Super Gina, thank you very much. Anyway, um, there's a beautiful history about this man. Alfred worked for Boeing. And one day, he called me on the phone, and he says, "Morena, I have a project for you." He said, "I want you to help me put together a map of all the community and all its people." So we did this as early as 2006. I worked on this book with him and other contributors. And I sat, I guess, at the taverns and mapped out where every family lived. And we have him pretty much outlined, family by family, who lived in those families. There are some that we can, we don't, not because we don't have any of the history of the families, but he put together, and we put together this book. And this is on sale at the Historical Society. And we've sold many, many copies. And then when Gene Bebill passed away, his wife donated money. So we've had two printings of this particular map of former Sopras areas and the towns. And then Judy, you want to talk about your wonderful keepsake?
About eight or nine years ago, I wanted to document just our town, try to reconstruct it. It's bothered me that there's absolutely nothing. And so I mentioned it to my oldest sister, Trish, and I said, "I want to do a book." And she said, "Well, let's do it." So I came here, and a friend of mine was coming for the recorder. And I thought the easiest way to do it would be to go to the S.S.R.'s office. They'd have photographs, the tax records, something like that, and it would be easy to do. And it was supposed to be a little coffee table book. Well, then we talked to the people of Sopras. Well, we've done that, I'm getting ahead of myself, that our records have been shredded. And I was very, very upset about that. Um, my friend took me to, I guess they were in the basement, and then from the basement, apparently, went to Roundup Park and the buildings. And he actually got a guy to open the building so that I could get those records. Well, he found out later that they had been shredded, and we couldn't find them. So I told my sister that I really had a dream to do a book and at least, you know, to memorialize the town. I mean, this is ridiculous. Uh, so we got this people of Sopras together, and we, each family donated pictures of their homes. We did the history on it. Each family wrote their story behind it, losing members, you know, mining accidents, sending their sons off to war. I mean, we have beautiful pictures in here of our little taverns, which then it wasn't a tavern tavern, it was our community center.
We got free camping.
We had a bowling alley in one, we had riving showers, dances, stuff like that. And so it came to pass that we got to do it. COVID was a blessing for me because I was quite busy and uninterrupted. And so my sister and brother and I composed this book and entrusted it to the Trinidad Historical Society. And so anyway, we're trying our best because it should have been forgotten. It's a too important part of our history for one.
So yes, first of all, thank you so much.
So yes, first of all, thank you so much. Where would you be recommending to set such a site? And let me give you, this morning we had a coffee talks at the college. And so the president of the college gave a little bit of a note. The permanent library is going to be at stake. So having known that I was coming to this meeting as well, and I read all the information, watched the video, I recommend to the college president and the team to consider having as a reverend library, Sopras and the whole mine history to develop, kind of combine the whole thing within the college. Now, I put that out there with no misinformation, but I think the college is one of the places where people visit so much. And even the way to have some of those gems and that information. So where would you want to build something in? What is your perspective?
Well, we've talked a lot about again, and you know, they have a visitor's center at the Amseide. And it's very miniscule. I don't know if you've been to the state and the grass and the welcome centers and Kansas on the outskirts of the town. They have these beautiful welcome centers. One was the memorialized, it was like a museum over the highway. And you literally go in and they have these beautiful memory field. I'm not suggesting this, but it was like a march over the highway. And you go in and you learn the history of entering the state, and it's absolutely splendid. It showed the old pioneers with the old wagon and buggy. I mean, you could actually feel the emotion as you're going through there. And you know, we're open to anything. I mean, you could see we have nothing. And the current, the current area is, really does not do us any favor or wrong. So you know, that's a wonderful idea. Greta Martin, I think, is in charge of the museum, and she's in the Historical Society. And so, you know, that could be an option. We're open to your ideas, your help. We just need to get something moving, plausible, so we can feel and touch it and remember. I'm going to be gone in a few years, I know. Alan says on the little.
And he's right. I speak to the new park manager, Lloyd Grant, but possibly there'll be additional signage or something through his office and the CPW.
I have not, and I don't think.
I've talked to him a little bit about it. My idea was to pull out that room and have it as a center where we could put, like, I think we still have our school block around the local schools and just make it a history. Because I feel like the college is a great idea and we'll take anything right now. But I feel like our history belongs with our community.
With the area.
But I don't know. I think that, would that involve, involve the federal government?
See, we're afraid of the federal government. They put their, look, Alan, you don't go anywhere without, you know, the state park.
So I think Mr. Hess has a good friend at the state park level as well. And the relationships that we have here in Los Angeles County with our state delegates of Northern, we can really assist you when we have more with something. I don't know what, but at least we have the connections for the conversations and these stuff.
We certainly appreciate your ideas, your thoughts, whatever. You know, we're willing to do the work. But I, I'd like to put on my grave knowing that something was done in honor of the people of Sopras. And for our children. You know, a number of years ago, I was asked to do a hunting boat ride. And I took people on a hunting boat over the lake. And literally, we stopped the boat right at the towns because they're underwater. You know, my dad used to say, one of these days I'm going to answer, but he literally said he would fish off of his port. And literally, you know, I know these fish are huff of that port because that's exactly where it is.
I got something to say this. So I, we're going to have to go a little bit back down. I didn't see a house and they gave those names at one time. I mean, I know I'm a nuclear relative, I'm a nuclear company. I moved here in 82, 84 years ago. So I miss, I miss Sopras by the way. You know, knowing that the dam was federal, that's federal, and you have to go through your court. You've been on the right there at the dam, so you have to review that. Where, to, you know, the sheriff would advise us and the parish would need to go.
Thank you, Campbell. But thank you for your time and for this opportunity. Because I think it would mean the world to them.
Yeah.
I believe I was in program with Garden of Colorado on the Los Angeles County. There's a wonderful documentary now done about the county of Sopras. Can you tell us about that? Because he just said it was an absolute amazing.
Yes, and it's actually, I actually have a footnote in it because it was the paint for coal is the documentary. And I have the link, okay? But the film's not available to the general public as they've been nominated for an award and they have to go through all those processes before it can be let out to the public. They gave us a copy of the link so we could watch it because our loved ones were in there. To Dominic and Sheedy's daughter helped produce it. And it was actually produced by Patty Butler Spears. And I have that linked in here for you, just don't tell anybody. And I won't tell.
I purchased a video from Robert Gayle on coal and the history, or the Trinidad history. Is that part of this?
No, in fact, I have a phone call in to Robert because he has so many interesting projects going. Another project I'm working on is the Colorado Mission Churches in Colorado. They're on the highway, Highway 12. And you see all these beautiful little history churches. Nobody knows anything about them. There's weeds around them and everything. Many of them are up for sale and they were sold. So I'm trying to put together a compendium of all the little trinkets. And I met with Mary Ellen Hayek yesterday, who's a wonderful resource as well. It's helping me on that project. So no, Alan, I'm not going to die yet. I don't think all your problems are out of the way.
Sorry about you. I'll pick you up.
So I'm sorry that Sopras families have been through that twice. I've had the experience in my life. So when I took my grandfather's ranch, when I built the pond and plant up, and then when the building came to expansion, there's four words that I extremely described for the greater good. I've heard that too many times and I'm sorry that you have to agree.
So thank you so much. You know, I was going to also recommend, perhaps even again, a full of the federal delegation. You have your representative right now, who came out at the end of the year and came up?
Oh, okay.
At least it's, he's still the representative through the senate.
Well, this area, yes. You said hers and it's not him.
No, for, to perhaps begin to do a proclamation from that perspective. And because we're going to need, when I say we, to get whatever you want to call it, it's going to be the federal documents in the middle. So we have to reach out to the regents. And then why not reach out to either or both senators, if you remember? And Bennett through December, and then let's see what happens. But I think they would be given the steps to follow. And then from our perspective, once they're taken, and there was a few offices there, so I'm grateful. And I assume it was there because the Mexican-American Revolution was going on between 1846 and 1848. So I didn't cross the border, the border crossed me. So I think from that perspective, it's incredibly awesome that this history is there. So thank you so much, and we'll keep you posted. And rest assured, the conversations will keep on.
If we were to communicate, who would you suggest we communicate?
We point that direction, yes.
Okay, will do. Thank you, sir. Yes.
And thank you so much.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you. Have a great day. You know, I know we have another couple of our presenters, but at this point in time, I want to ask for a five minute process. If that's a very good.
Sure.
Okay.
It's interesting.
I think you're also. So that was it.
Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. All right, please stop in our presentations, we're gonna go to our Vial of Life. Thank you so much for being here today and appreciate the opportunity to catch up with you.
And we'll make this real brief. I'm Sandy Golak, and I've worked with Mount Rose Hospital for about two and a half years with their operating department. And I've turned some grant money and just I like doing good things in the communities. And you guys have been gracious and given us some money and some COVID money that we're doing some good things with. And one of them is this Vial of Life. We also got an X-50 grant that we've been doing health and wellness programs, which in all honesty hasn't gone as well as I would like. We don't care about the man of blood pressures, but they are interesting, our Vial of Life stuff, and we're working on a resource manual that needs to be done in our community. And the reason we're gonna do it and are able to do it has a lot of thank you to both the county commissioners here and the county commissioners in Marin County. And that will be on the front of the little resource pamphlet we're doing. We're doing two of them. One will be for medical resources and one will be for community resources. And I think it would be just a really, really valuable thing for the community. There's been Big Books and there's been the Blue Book, and they're all full of advertising, and they have things in the front room, and we just wanna synthesize what's available in our counties down here. So part of the reason we're able to do that is through some of the funding that you channel through Mount Rose. This is also interesting too, and I just wanna invite you guys, I do a lot of stuff in Marin County, and I'm kinda drawing back on Rosetta because we can only do so much. I have a nonprofit called Lockwood Heritage Foundation promoting cultural equity, and I'm very honored to native Hispanic cultures through our education and presentation. September 3rd, it's a Saturday, in Walsauburg, Virginia Sanchez, who's a very noted historian of this area and often will be doing a program at the Walsauburg Museum. But even at eleven and one, there's things going on in Marin County, and her latest book is called Please, Petitions and Treaties. And normally I would find some of the book absolutely boring, it is absolutely fascinating. And you're not an honorable people in recognizing the treaties that were here in Southern Colorado. You know, you were born, you were, what time you were in Mexico, then you were in New Mexico, and then you were in Colorado by helicopter, you brought stuff that I normally find very boring, it's really, really fascinating. So you're more than welcome to come up with a presentation with a new book. Please, Petitions and Treaties by Virginia Sanchez, fascinating book. She also wrote a book called The Lost, Forbidden City of Ina's Lower Valley. Ketchera was actually a community that was southeast of Walsauburg originally, and the story is very much out of Sopra's of what happened there. So I'm totally invested in the history and some of the work that I'm doing through health and wellness. I believe, I believe living is an art, and I believe that being able to tell the stories and being honored. I've got a whole project that it's the other four H, it's Orphanal Honors the Hispanic Culture of Hispanic Heritage. So you need to go over, but you know, it's embracing the whole thing. So I wanted to thank you guys for hanging in there, for giving us money, for us to do good work. We've been able to do some things, we've directed four patients with Sopra's, but more so this community work that I feel is so important. Our health and wellness program project now, talk to the Health Department, they weren't able to do these health things around the community because of COVID, and Captain Mont Harris says they're gonna start it up again. We're gonna partner with them, we can go with them when they do the blood pressures and they can do things that we couldn't do, the blood sugars and the liver profile. So we can go with them, and we will be the resource people. We will have the resources available, we'll have the digital life information form I've added to our Vial of Life. People who are concerned about their animals, and they are themselves, so we now have a form that can go in with a Vial of Life that has information about their animals, and a little opt-in on the front, so that people are aware. And we're working with community service people, and anybody in the community that's willing to be smarter about having this Vial of Life information available. So that's kind of what we're doing, that's how I wanna deal with the grant, I wanna deal with you guys' money in our resource manual, and I just really appreciate the support.
If somebody wants to get ahold of you, how do they get, how do they reach you?
They go, "Queen, come forth."
I like that, you know.
You have to use my telephone. I'll give you guys a card, it's got a mail with my phone number on it, and I'm more than happy, I'm trying to concentrate a little more on Marin County, but my heart's Southern Colorado, or generations level, fourth generation, and I love it down here, so anything I can do, I'm there.
A few months ago, I seen your presentations as we announced at the city, and I asked for you to bring that over to us. I'm glad you guys are finally here. I'm glad you're here that you're working with the Health Department, I am on that board directly as well. Kathy's in the process of, well, she retired, but she's still hanging on with us. So if you have any disconnect with that happening, please feel free to contact me, and I can assist with those phone calls to help them up the program with the Health Department, but I think this is something that was handy, and with that. And also, we will pass this information on later today to our director, Mr. Aragon, from Department of Human Services.
We would like to come do, just come set up someplace here, so you guys can do Vial of Life, and we're just making it available as you're going to lunch or something, so.
So I'll have Mr. Aragon reach out to you as well, and I'll look at you this afternoon. I'll probably try to make sure all the things are crossed and nice are dotted, so if there's anything we can do, I'm sure there's nothing that that department is feeling, but I think this is another asset for our elderly and my name for bringing over.
And thank you so much for reaching out to Kathy prior to me coming here this morning. You know how you play phone game, but Kathy Mittera and I talked on the telephone, and we're going to partner with her at, again, at the senior center, but now we're also gonna go up to Segado and do the Vial of Life up there at the same time that she is doing the blood pressures and blood sugar, so that all this can tie together. So yeah, so the partnering and community stuff is really coming together, and it's only through your efforts that you're, you know, giving us the opportunity to do this. I will tell you now a little bit about the Vial of Life that I get so excited about. Vial of Life is a program that started many, many years ago, as it kind of went off the DPN, but it's a program that allows individuals to have their medical information to the first responders that enter their home, and this is so, so important. It consists of life means, lifesaving information for emergencies. And what it consists of is very simple, and it is a work in progress, so bear with us. It consists of literally a baggie with two stickers and their bright brand. One sticker goes on the front door, and the other sticker goes on this baggie. Inside this baggie is a form of all of your medical information, your medications, who is your primary care doctor, the last time you've been to the doctor, whatever. This form then gets folded up, even, and one of the things to partner with Kathy, on the back of the form, there is a place for the last time your blood pressure, blood sugar, whatever was taken, so that they have access. There is something called that open hour that first responders need and their lifesaving opportunities, so they will have that at their fingertips. This form then gets folded up, put in the baggie, and with this beautiful Mount Rose that funded this magnet, the form goes in the baggie, the baggie then gets sealed with this magnet, and it goes on the refrigerator door. The refrigerator door is kind of the universal place all over the country, the first responders go to your home, go to that refrigerator, and they're gonna have this information immediately.
And we changed the form, the original Vial of Life, and the Vial of Life people were great, they just wanted to get the information out. Somebody pointed out that there was a home invasion, and they saw the Vial of Life thing and grabbed that. The original Vial of Life didn't capture social security number, your underwear size, it had the license for breakfast and everything, so it really was a goldmine for identity there. So we've eliminated all those things, no personal information, just the medical part.
Then we have been meeting around the city and county, and we went up and did one up at the Trinidad Ambulance Association, we went over there. Now, they really came up with a neat thing, the highlight banner, I said, in this big pinker form, they came up with this. Trifold inside the baggie, and we really liked this. There's one thing, this is a bit cheaper than this, so that's where your daughters or whatever we could use, would be going, this absolutely does the job, no more questions, you know, but this is just fingertip, and even saying who to contact, your neighbor, your next of kin, so that they would give that very, very important information.
Oh, we have that on our form too. To me, there's Vial of Life, which was really, ours was a few cents a piece to do, the Vial of Life was three dollars a piece, so, you know.
That's the difference, baggie versus.
Will you step to Veronica Mays with the AAA program and call?
Yes. They were not very responsive to doing things in our community, I'm afraid.
Well, that's a sadie here to come on the board of the council.
Oh, and if you do anything about it now, Louise would be great.
There's a lot of funding available.
That's what she said. Yeah, but we, you know, like I'm saying, this absolutely does whatever, avoid, doesn't this look much nicer.
Because we really, AAA is what we're doing such, it's what really turns the cog for this whole thing.
Jennifer Oliver is the director, the new director of COG, and that's changes the name. So I want you to reach out to Jennifer as a, I reckon that you reach out to her as a board member is not really good for me to do so. Please reach out to Jennifer, let her know that I advised you to contact her, do a presentation as a board director or council director.
Okay.
What I'm doing here, and let that board take that into consideration if they want to assist with this program.
Not really, because of the tax dollars, I mean, we could, like I'm saying, what we're doing right now, it gives everything that we need covered, covered, but we want to do better. And I will tell you that every place, every place that we do go inside, they're really are craving for this information, and they, everybody in the family does have the opportunity to say, this is really important. And the issue is us becoming the resource people.
And the learning programs would take the wheels on wheels, they can deliver, they can think about.
Yes, their I-LAS program.
So please call Ms. Oliver.
I will call Ms. Yeah. I went to a board meeting, it was a few months ago, and I think, if you were on Zoom, you were attended by Zoom, and yeah.
It was your original area council.
Yes, if there's any of those dollars that are concerned, put them to extremely good use. Yes.
Kim Chavez, would you like to speak? Yes, Ms. Chavez, go ahead, there is a question for you coming in to follow up.
Good morning, not a question, I just wanted to reach out, I'm Kim Chavez, I'm the emergency manager for the county, and I wanted you to know that I do have emergency preparedness workbooks to help out with your cause as well, they're a great resource, and if you'd like to stop by, I can give you a whole lot.
Oh, wonderful. Downstairs? Yes, because during the function, we are finding out that it's turning into one huge project, making this resource manual, but we're also finding out the importance of it. These senior citizens and elderly who are applying to their home, they need a fingertip access to resources, and so this is why we have decided to separate. It was all in one, it was a medical thing. What we're finding out now is, no, they want more than that, they're craving for more, so we're separating doing the medical and just doing the community resources, and that's what we're working on now. It will be tri fold, it will be something that they could get their hands on, they don't want to know a bunch of, read a bunch of advertising, and not that they don't care, but they don't need what's going on up in Northern Colorado, they want something here for them. And our communities and our counties are really offering more and more for them, and we want to get that information to them. You guys provide transportation, so that if there is something down there, we provide the information to get them out of their homes and get them to these things. The farmer's market is something that they would love to attend, and there are those dollars now through Veronica and Co. that they're smashing funds, get them out, get them to those things, so that's what we're trying to propose.
There's a skill that I can do to help you all, just, please reach out, I'll be happy to phone you, get information out, or whatever you need.
Oh, wonderful, thank you, thank you so much.
Just go downstairs and speak, please.
First floor?
First floor.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. Happy thank you for letting us present, and thank you, Louise, for inviting us.
I'm gonna need my notes from my mother.
Oh, I'll fill her.
I will. So let us know if there's gaps in services and whatnot that we can fill. Here, my card, I'm gonna give you my other lifetime, but it's got my phone number and the email.
Thank you.
All right. And we've got one last presentation that is coming to us, I think it's on Zoom. We have Rebecca Pootwin from, I believe is Otero County. Good morning, Rebecca, how are you?
Good morning, everyone, thank you, commissioners, for letting me visit with Phil for arranging this. I think all the commissioners, I think you know me, I'm from LaLunta, I'm very involved in historic preservation, I'm on the Otero County Historic Preservation Board, past many year board member at President Carr Preservation Inc. I served for about the last five years on the Colorado's Archaeology and Historic Preservation Committee, and I'm somehow, again, I'm now on the National Board for the National Lives Preservation Commissions. When I visit with you, just a little bit, a little bit about an issue that I think is very important, but I just want to say I wanted to thank the ladies for the presentation on Sopra's, I learned a lot. My grandfather was born at Sopra's and spent his early years there, before they moved up to homies early 1900s. I never knew him, but I can remember going with my great uncle Everett Canterbury, standing up on the hills, overlooking as they were finishing the demolition and getting ready to fill it, and trying to point out where they had lived and where everything was, so that is really, I don't have a lot of knowledge of Sopra's, so I enjoyed them a lot. My grandfather was Robert Homer Canterbury, his brother Everett Canterbury was a member who was a postmaster, they're co-ooned there, trained after a few years with my great uncle. My great uncle on the other side was Jim Johnson, who they don't even call his name anymore, no, I have the long eyes to credit him. So you probably all remember in February, I know that Los Angeles County sent in a response to Fort Carson Army on four little altitude, no ground, they were wanting to establish in Southeast Colorado. These are, let me ask you all hundred foot, well, at a hundred foot place. At the time, I know Otero County did, they did, I did analysis, which was in a letter asking the Santa Fe Trail Association and the National Trail Office of Santa Fe, or Preservation Inc., and even the Shippensburg Office, and they all pressed, I believe, we did as well, concerns about that, requested some information from these. Although last, since February, I kept checking, and nobody had heard any response from the Army about those concerns. On August 4th, I was notified by Landowners that they had had helicopter for flying to Sabre Rock, which is the one that knows our campus and Sierra Vista, helicopter for flying that route at a hundred foot. And so I reached out to the Shippensburg Office, State for Information Office, to see what the status was, and they put me in contact with the advisory council's historic preservation in Washington DC, which is, I've worked with them before quite a bit on the canyon issue. They are the federal entity that is responsible for overseeing compliance with the National Historic Preservation Act. What we found out was that the Army, Fort Carson submitted an E, called the E-106 documentation form to advise the council, and they stated, and I'm gonna read this, they notified ACHP, initiation, proposal for federal undertaking, prior to completion of the Section 106 consultation. So basically, what the Army has done is they have said they're not gonna follow either the current regulations with the federal law, and they have already begun using the helicopter flights, rep. Why it's important, I know you had concerns, we had a lot of concerns about this. This all goes back to 2012, they initiated the camp for Fort Carson, to have the camp brought to Fort Carson. This is associated with that, at the time, they said they had enough airspace for the training to be at Fort Carson. And then they also said, you know, a few years later, then they put in a ramp off, go out to route from Fort Carson to Canyon Canyon, and again, there was a lot of concerns about that, but they said that was gonna be a big keep there. Now they're doing this other four rep, this goes against the federal order, I believe, that eliminated the, that threw out directive decision on transformation, and a couple of EISs and EAs associated with changing how Canyon Canyon was moved. Most importantly is Fort Carson has gone back to their pattern, not following the law, and for all the comments about wanting to be a good neighbor and work with the local community, I think they abandoned that approach. I have a lot more information, and I've done a full page analysis that I've sent into the Otero County Commissioners, and they are preparing a letter to send to the ACHP. When there was a number of issues back in 2010, 2011, similar type issues, Otero County and some other consulting parties sent a letter to the ACHP asking for finding what's determined as foreclosure. That is not something that falls within what we commonly think of foreclosure, it's a term that ACHP, the conservation community, uses, it's a basically foreclosed upon the right, consulting parties, specifically the ACHP to comment on an undertaking like this. comment on an undertaking like this and we asked for that. They put in a lot of very strict requirements for Fort Carson. They followed through. One of the things that was issued at that time, they are integrating cultural resource management plan, which they are required, they have expired in 2006. They finally got a new one in place in 2017 and it expired earlier this year. So we're seeing more and more of that pattern. I can provide to you a lot of additional information, but maybe if you have questions, but I guess I'm basically, I'm here to say other consulting parties and stakeholders have a lot of concerns about this. These low on flights and Fort Carson's decision to avoid their legal responsibilities. The advisory council is talking with the staff members, we call the army liaison that oversees army undertakings and these kinds of issues. They have sent a letter to the Army asking for additional information and they included in that letter, a letter that they received from Fort Carson in 2011, admitting to not making the same mistakes of the past. It is my understanding from ACHP staff, they have the deputy directors of ACHP has gone directly to the Army Historic Preservation Officer and Secretary of the Army on this issue. But I think the local community can make a reach out and let the Shippo and the ACHP and our local officials to know what's going on and other concerns to the community. And I, if I had to ask any questions, as Tony knows, I have probably threw more information at it than you ever will want to have.
Rebecca, did you get a letter from the Otero County Commissioners? Are they gonna do it?
Yes, they are. I've done a, it's about a twelve-page analysis and a draft letter that they are reviewing right now. And I understand that they, they're reviewing it and my understanding is that they will be sending it. It will go to the ACHP. ACHP asked that any letters are also being copied to the Army and the Shippo and we also, I think they will be sending it to their senators and the other stakeholders, the National Trail Office and the Forest Service, the Santa Fe Trail Association.
Well, those flight zones, they affect Plowton County, Fremont County and Orphanoke County. Have you reached out to anybody in those counties?
I'm afraid I don't know as many county commissioners as I did at one time, but I did reach out. I sent an email to Commissioner Colosseum in Markville County and I know that he's, he's come through with passing. With the Army and sent him some information. I really don't have contacts in that county right now.
You know what? We have the CCI president here and he does have contacts for those county commissioners. So.
Rebecca, I will send you the list of those county commissioners to include El Paso County because as they're going through, I don't know if there's any interruptions in El Paso County, but you know, when we met with the outgoing Garrison Commander at that time, it was about a few months ago, they came to Trinidad and along with the Shippo, one of the, one of the statements of faith, good faith effort was that we will continue to be a department and Commissioner Tony has actually asked the, for them to knock out the routes that they were going to be flying through and absolutely correct. So it's El Paso, Fremont, Pueblo, Orphanoke, Placitas, you know, and on the way back, of course, you have.
Otero.
Otero. And so from that perspective, let me follow up with you and I'll send you the names and the contacts for all those counties and then you choose to see what you wanna do. But whatever response that you, what response that you give from the level.
How the commissioners and how the commissioners work. It is a concern. I think it's also important for the commissioners to read up commissioner with commissioner. Has a lot of impact.
Sure. Sure. And we have a pretty good relationship with all those counties. I mean, we know them individually and personally, but what about the Garrison Commander? You didn't get a response directly from them here in Colorado Springs?
No. You know, and part of the issue is, you know, the legal Army regulations and the federal legal requirements is this Section 106 consultation. We all sent in comments and concerns about these flights and I think the only response we got was on August 1st, we had a report that they were flying the route and they had decided, never notified any consulting parties, including the Shippo and just notified ACHP in Washington that they were gonna go ahead and they were not going to fulfill their Section 106 responsibilities. This is a, this is a major breach of federal law. And there are regulations. I think one thing is there've been, Tony, I know Tony knows, Hallidair and Lane Thomas that work with the cultural resources, the DEAF, the DEAF, and the Army Cultural Resources for Fort Carson, they have both retired in the last year, year and a half. The cultural, other cultural resources, now is the same that have been there. They know what the regulations and the requirements are with the laws. And I think this is a, well, truly undermines the many years of promises we have of being a good neighbor, of just to completely ignore all the local community and the consulting party, including the state and just decide to go ahead and do. And they did that because there were so many concerns about this and the process. They were, their analysis that they decided to go ahead and move forward with.
When is the next meeting scheduled? I know we meet with them regularly, at least two, three times a year.
They posted a, they moved it seems to be last week. Commissioner, there may be one scheduled to be in October. I think in October, I don't know if that's.
Well, Rebecca, we'll take the information in consideration and definitely what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna reach out to the board of county commissioners from Otero and then I'll make a few phone calls to Pueblo, Fremont and Orphanoke. You already reached, reached out to them, so, but thanks for bringing that information to us.
And if you'd like me to send the analysis that I did and that I went to our county commissioners or any other information, if you'd like to have me send it to you, just let me know and I will.
I think that would be good.
Couple of questions. Yes. Rebecca Philnor, can, how many of these flights have taken place?
Well, I think, I think that's the other thing that's important. If all of you remember back to the Section 106 we got, the issue was it would be intermittent. And that was, and that was one of the comments that Otero County made, some others made, was that, you know, intermittent, first of all, that doesn't meet the requirements of their legal analysis, but that was pretty open-ended. In the documents that they've sent to, in the document they submitted to the ACHP, they are now saying it would be a couple, at least year round, several of these a week. So there's 104 flights. They, and it's with more during whenever you train at Fort Carson or Pinyan Canyon. And we're talking, they're saying anywhere from two to three on a regular basis helicopters to five or six. So you're looking at, you know, 200 flights a year or so. We're looking at three to 500 helicopters, district extrapolating, and that's the other part of what they told us in Section 106 was intermittent. I think, you know, weekly, five weekly a year, week after week, year after year is a lot different than intermittent.
How many, how many? Do you know how many have taken place? How many have actually happened?
I have, there's quite a one from a landowner who witnessed it.
And my second?
I've asked him to reach out to other property owners and ranchers to see if anybody else has seen them. You know, one of the routes goes directly over Datchet. And so I'm sure that they're, whether they're starting to use those routes, I don't know. I feel that they are using the Sabre Route.
And my second question is, why are the letters being addressed to ACHP?
The advisory council for historic preservation is a federal entity that is responsible, by Congress have been given the responsibility to oversee these types of issues. It is a entity that was part of when the National Historic Preservation Act was established, passed, put in place. It has preservation experts from around the country that sits on it. It also has representatives on, there are standing representatives, Secretaries of Federal Agencies, Department of Interior, the Secretary of Interior, that's on there, representatives from the Secretary, the Department of Interior that's on there.
Okay, so.
Put it at all encompassing entity that oversees these and makes sure that the law is followed.
Okay, so then you.
So that's why it's been pushed up to them and is what the recommendations to address the letter to them, copies to armies and the other entities.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Goodwin? Um, Noah, I just have, thank you Rebecca for being here and bringing forward this information to us. I appreciate it very much and we would please be so kind to say hello in my pen keys. Commissioner Mr. Miller, open. Thank you.
Okay, well, good to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We are going to go to Section 8, do business. Consideration of EIA, EIA F, maybe grant for ground level 22, 24.6 and 57.7.
Commissioner, before you agree consideration is, engine bay, system, grant for the 22nd January, 24.6 and then I'll go for the 7.7. Price awards, total, best work to, to do that.
Any questions, Commissioner? You have a big time, I'm 30. 31 by 30. What is the length of this paving road, Mr. President?
24.6, 3.1 miles, 57.7. One lot with 6, you're right. You said, I have $50,000 match, you go after $700,000 in total. Funds and maybe also, we need the world mission club also, you name it, worth $35,000.
Yes, if there are no other questions, I will enter any motion.
22, 24.6 and 57.7.
Second.
Second motion. Commissioner Luis, open it. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner please.
Yes. A, B, consideration of liquor license for high country liquor LLC, counsel.
Commissioners, I have reviewed this application and as of this morning, it is not completely for, ready to be filed on today.
Much? Commissioners, any questions on that?
Making motion, shapeable, realizing for high country liquor LLC. Second motion.
Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Luis, open it. Yes.
Yes. Consideration of change order 22 dash 8001, various folks, airport increase in asphalt quantity. Please throw in that.
Commissioners, before you agree consideration is, I have been, I need to, I need to, I need to increase the asphalt tonnage of the place at various stores airport because of the professional system problems they're running into with the base and some of these materials out there. The increase in tonnage is necessary. I believe finance director probably stole this year's money, find out, transfer, fill on his asphalt pay for the original estimate or to buy some more to consider this.
And so, Commissioner, looking at the, I think you mentioned the prices, I believe it's $1,000 and we've got those coming out of built.
100 tons of medicine.
Excuse me, Tony? 100 tons?
Yes, yes, 100 tons.
So we could, we could pull with a three inch mat, probably with a three and a half way to purchase another 100 tons of special, and protect away, which is where this has been.
I'm sure that this may happen. Not one intended, that's a one make sure. Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, I'll enter any motion.
We will approve change order 22 dash 8001, various stores airport, increasing asphalt quantity.
Second. Commissioner Luis, open it. Yes. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner please.
Yes. Section 9, consideration of bills in payroll for the first half of August 2022. Why not direct to paper?
Uh, payroll has, uh, August 15th was 182,946 and 72 cents. We have any questions on payroll?
That's all. Uh, just a very, very small question. What constitutes double time?
Um, I think that's working on Saturday or Sunday, correct, Kim?
Sunday or Monday. Sunday or Monday.
Yes, that's correct.
So if you have a question for me, sorry, I could hear it here.
No, the question was, what constitutes double time?
Yes, I'm sure I'm all in.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other questions? Otherwise, I will enter any motion.
When you go to a table for the first half of August 2022. Second motion.
Any requests?
No, we're gonna, and we're gonna.
Oh, we do something different?
No. No, we're gonna take all of this and then we'll do the.
But we normally do it all together.
Okay.
But that's not the same.
I resent my order.
Okay. Problem, Chris.
Uh, bills in on August 10th, 156,946 and 81 cents. Sales came on. August 3rd, so, August 3rd was 89,375 and 4 cents. Any questions on, any voices that were paid on this? Now, the first half of us.
We have a, let me see here, one very, very small, it's not even an issue, I just wanted, somebody went on the toll highway for $9, I think, and 60 cents. And I'm glad to see that our business stays in Denver.
Yeah.
47. Yeah, 47, maybe.
When the road bridge, people have to pick up, it's a, they usually use that tool. Yeah, this is, this is charged on the bridge.
Yes.
Please call these charges or is there a mention $4 and $60 and $50?
On the same day, so, yes, thank you.
And that's it, that's all I have.
And now, making motion.
Consideration of both the payroll for the first half of August 2022.
Second motion. Commissioner has? Yes. Commissioner Luis, open it. Yes. Commissioner please.
Yes. Information only, financials as of July 2022.
Okay, so our general fund, as of July, we have a surplus of 548,000. Road bridge has a deficit of 977,000. Therefore, you know, we transferred 400,000 last year, they have lost already. Yeah, so I know we're looking into that. Contingent, this is our emergency fund, has a profit of 96,000. Capital expenditure has a profit of 579,000. We're still in the middle, we're on phase two, we'll be moving on to phase three soon. So I always watch capital expenditure, the, the funds there. Water has a profit of 30,000. Water has a profit of 33,000, but I know we're looking at a water, we should put our perverts to improve pills. We have a profit of 84,000, so that'll help with the airport, 12,000 we're gonna transfer over there. Alia, that belongs to our sheriff, or DUI, so that's a profit of 1,194. And J O, I haven't tracked you the money yet, so I'm gonna wait till the end of the year to see if I'm going to or if I'm not, because I watch those funds very good. Any care of any comments? I want to look at Road and Bridge, I'm a little worried about its fund balance a little bit, because right now gets a balance of 2.3 million, so I think we should lash that a little bit with Road and Bridge. There's another law revenue comes in for Road and Bridge.
And that's what, that was gonna be my question, almost a million dollar deficit in there, what else are we expecting? I know there's.
AHTF comes in, um, we have 140,000 that just came in for the Main Street, that's, that happened in August, that has a shoulder, but, nothing worth it, because it doesn't look like any grants right there, so that's why I'm a little bit concerned that we should probably watch a little bit more of that.
Security's over here now. What, you're pouring 1 million in that?
Um, 2006, 2007, after all those snow misers we had, the snowstorms and mists, we'll be at 100 bucks a dollar, but we build that fund up to five or six million, Department of Local Affairs, to stay competitive, and those energy impact assistance funder answers. They don't want to see a fund balance for those entities, so why those grants? Because the question will be, why don't you pay for it out of your fund balance? So we're gonna try and keep the fund balance, I'm leaving the board, pass the resolution, and shoot from the hip, and give it to $100 for Road and Bridge, and three months worth of operations for two of the funds, tomorrow we hold it in the circle. And I think that's what, so. I do see on our revenue side, under the, this line is, looking at 1.6 million dollars, it's worth 232% of that.
Well, that, that's, that's because when we built your budget, we said that we're gonna use so much fund balance to accomplish your budget.
That's what I was hoping.
And that's being anticipated, but what I was reading on had nothing to do with the budget, this is just actually what is in the fund, that's your fund balance.
You were appropriating from the fund balance.
Correct.
The line is, did that make sense?
So it didn't balance.
Sounds good, okay.
And I know he watches it, I just, he just, he just spent a grant for 750,000, that is our cash match, and then you have big equipment coming next year, so I'm just trying to tell you, I'm just going to begin watching Road and Bridge.
And I'm gonna go back and take that 200,000.
Are you talking about General Fund?
Yes.
I watched General Fund, you're very careful, okay?
So one of the, one of the, one of the, I had highlighted in my last, my, my highlights, I didn't make note, we still have, I think, a little bit of money from the care side.
We have a bar, we have bar fund, but no care side. We've spent, because we've received 700, 700,000, and we've spent every penny, because we were audited, we were audited by, by a company that the state sent in, and we spent every penny of care side, but we do have bar funds available that we might use for the A-trip.
Correct, correct.
Has the health department, has the health department got his permission to request them?
No, I was, we're being able to pull, so we just, yeah.
And also, I want to say thank you for providing interview or data sheets for each one of the front centers, that's really great to see the.
I can do the comparison.
Yes, and that really is, it gives an opportunity to do a horizontal comparison, if you will, from year to year, so I really, thank you for doing that.
So something for, for Road and Bridge, this is me to stand alone and begin to watch, just, just to be a set of eyes.
Thank you. Especially when it's talking about confiscating the 200,000 dollars.
I can accept that.
Even though, even though, even though, even though, you built much of Road and Bridge, maybe it's.
I just, I'm a philosopher, thank you.
I, 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 excuse me, in order to, in order to, another set of eyes always really helpful.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Really appreciate that. Any other questions, financials, commissioners? Thank you, Christine, for the work. At this point, this is, I believe we're gonna probably adjourn this meeting, we're going to. DHS.
Make a motion to suspend the Board of County Commissioners meeting at this time and enter into the Board of County Commissioners Act of the passage, page of reserves and the private business.
Second motion. Commissioner asks, yes. Commissioner Luis Lopez, yes. Commissioner please.
Yes.